Good evening, everyone. I call the city council meeting to order. I see that we have no one for the open forum. Okay, then I would ask that everyone stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unnation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And that's the city council's approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 24th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries. Tonight's going to be packed with a lot of really great presentations here tonight and some hats off. So I'm going to start first with a presentation proclamation designating Public Health Week. Erin, do you want to join me at the ... And then I'm going to hand it off to you folks for Public Health Week. This is a proclamation. Whereas the week of April 6th through the 12th, 2015, was National Public Health Week in the United States and the theme is Healthiest Nation 2030. And whereas since 1995, the Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public health. And whereas preventing diseases before they start is critical to helping people live longer, healthier lives, while managing health-related costs. And whereas preventable chronic disease, such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes, are responsible for millions of premature deaths each year. Whereas chronic disease cause Americans to miss 2.5 billion days of work each year, resulting in lost productivity totaling more than $1 trillion. And whereas investing just $10 per person each year is proven, a community-based public health effort could save the nation more than $16 billion within five years. And whereas a strong public health system is critical for sustaining and improving community health. Now therefore, I Debbie Gotal, Mayor of the City of Richfield hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2015, as Public Health Week in the City of Richfield, Minnesota, and call upon the people of Richfield to observe this week by helping out our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and adopt preventative lifestyle habits in light of this year's theme, Healthiest Nation 2030, dated this 14th day of April, 2015. Signed by Debbie Gotal. Congratulations. Please introduce yourself and then tell people about the ...
Thank you. I'm Erin Rickin and I am the Chair of the Advisory Board of Health, which helps counsel the city council in some of our recommendations and decisions and research that we think that they should follow. Our co-chair is also here. And then we also have a new lady we would like to introduce. Do you want to come up and do that? Thank you.
Mayor Gotal and City Council, Betsy Osborn, Support Services Division Manager and Public Safety. Many of you had met previously and know Karen Zelznak, who retired from the City of Bloomington in, I think it was 2014, early. And I, as a person who'd worked with Karen for many, many years, I had some concerns about whether there would be someone who could fill her shoes adequately. And I'm happy to report that the person who was hired in May of last year, her name is Bonnie Paulson, she's the new Public Health Director for the City of Bloomington. We've had a longstanding contract with them over the years and they do an amazing job. I know the mayor is very familiar. And I just wanted to introduce you to Bonnie and then give her a minute or so just to tell you a little bit about herself.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Bonnie Paulson. I'm the Public Health Administrator for the City of Bloomington. I want to thank you for recognizing Public Health Week. It's nice to kind of get us in front of you and the city to kind of know the importance of public health. I've been in public health since well, well over 20 years. And so it was a big change. I came from a rural county, Morrison County, down to the city. And so it's been a big change for me, but it's been great. It's been great working with Richfield and Betsy here in the Advisory Board of Health. So really appreciate your support and all of the public health things that we do.
The only other thing, and she wasn't able to be here tonight, that Lisa Brodsky, who is the Assistant Health Administrator for Bloomington, as well as the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for Bloomington, Edina Richfield, is leaving Bloomington. She's taken a position as Public Health Director in Scott County. So we'll be losing her in a week or so, I think. So Bonnie has got big shoes to fill that position too. So I just wanted to make you aware of that because Lisa has done a tremendous job for us over the years. So, thank you.
Karen, would you like to meet here for Earth Day, Arbor Day?
I'm Karen Schrag, the manager at Wood Lake Nature Center. Just wanted to tell you that we will be celebrating Earth Day on April 26th this year. Although Earth Day nationally is celebrated on the 22nd, we invite you all up to do that. And then on the same weekend, it's a busy weekend, on April 24th, we are going to be having the 25th Annual Friends of Wood Lake Dinner. And we have an amazing speaker this year who happens to be related to my boss, so I have to be really nice about it. Her name is Ellen Topitzhopper. She's going to be talking about what's happening to our bees. So if you're interested in what's going on with bees and we're going to have a wonderful dinner, we've got some wonderful prizes. All the money goes to Friends of Wood Lake and they help support the nature center in addition to the city's efforts. So, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to read this proclamation. Earth Day Arbor Month proclamation. Whereas Earth Day is celebrated nationwide on Wednesday, April 22nd, to bring awareness about the need to care for the environment. And whereas Arbor Month is celebrated nationally on Friday, April 24th, to promote the value of planting trees. And whereas Richfield Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain, and manage the health of Richfield's urban forests. And whereas trees and forests provide a natural play environment and encourage exploration, creativity, and activity. And whereas Wood Lake Nature Center honors Earth Day and Arbor Day through their weekend environmental-themed activities in April, including removing invasive species, I've done that, cleaning up the park, and leading educational programs about the plants, animals, and water at Wood Lake. And whereas the community is invited to participate in Richfield Park Cleanup Day on Saturday, April 25th, to demonstrate good stewardship of green spaces and natural resources. Whereas Urban Wildlife Half Marathon and 5K celebrate its 13th year funding the longstanding environmental education program in Richfield youth and uses only materials that are recyclable, compostable, and reusable. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Richfield is committed to promoting the values of Earth Day and Arbor Day and invites its citizens to celebrate the spirit of Earth Day and Arbor Day throughout the year by making environmentally responsible choices in their lives. Proclaimed this April 14th, 2015. Signed by Debbie Gotal. Thank you. Thanks for all you do, Karen. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. That's actually not all the excitement here. We have a, we have a whole lot more going on tonight. I'm excited to say that I have a proclamation honoring the Richfield High School baseball team of 1971 and '72 in the City of Richfield. How many of you are here? Who's here?
They're, they're not, they're not present because we're doing this in advance.
Are they doing in advance?
Of the April 18th, Richfield Spring Fling.
Okay, well let me, let me quickly, there's a slew, these people, these folks, this is a proclamation, is for outstanding achievement, a two consecutive state titles was accomplished on June 18th and June 16th in 1971 and '72. And you may wonder, why are we doing this now? Well, because the games were played after school was over, these folks who did such a fabulous job, our Spartans, were not able to have the accolades or the cheers from their schools or anybody because they were already out of school. So this, this is where it's really exciting. I'll pass these on, they're signed. And it says, whereas the City of Richfield is proud to be the home of Richfield High School and Spartans. And whereas, in addition to achieving excellence in education and extracurricular activities, the 1971 and '72 Richfield Spartans baseball team distinguished themselves by winning back-to-back state championships. Whereas the achievement of winning these championships was an extraordinary accomplishment requiring athleticism, skill, dedication, commitment, and heart. And whereas this back-to-back championship has never been repeated and remains worthy of remembering and celebrating. Now therefore, I Debbie Gotal, Mayor of the City of Richfield, is recognized, our aforementioned outstanding accomplishment, do hereby proclaim April 18th, 2015, as Class of '71-'72 Spartan Baseball Day in the City of Richfield and urge Richfield citizens and alumnis of Richfield High School to applaud and celebrate their accomplishments. It would be nice if some of them wanted to come to the city council meeting. It's always cool to hear their stories about the actual game and what happened and everything, you know, back then. So that's wonderful. I'll pass this on to ...
Mayor, I'll pass that along. Their, the Richfield alum are having their, their spring fling, the class of '72, I think, '71-'72. And they're having the baseball teams there and they're going to present these awards to them or these certificates that evening, so that should be kind of fine.
Yeah. We have some other special guests here tonight, sitting up in our front row are some very wonderful young people from Sheridan Hills. And I would like their accomplishments to come up and describe to us why they're here today and why are we sending great accolades to them. Come on, up here, come on. We want to see all your bright, beautiful faces. Everyone, go on up there.
I suppose we could put them up front.
Yeah, you guys, well, if they've got to speak first, if they're going to speak, then Go up to the mic really close, pull it down.
It bends.
It bends, pull it down. There you go.
My name is Rachelle.
My name is Corinna.
My name is Sydney.
My name is Nathan.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
My name is George.
Go ahead.
Hey Steve.
My name is William.
My name is Emily.
My name is Athena.
My name is Anita.
And we are the Sheridan Hills Future Problem Solvers.
Good evening. We are the Sheridan Hills Future Problem Solvers. Thank you for having us. Future problem solving is an academic challenge program that teaches us how to use the FPS six-step process to find challenges and solve problems related to the topics we study throughout the year. FPS teaches us how to think, not what.
Each year, teams around Minnesota compete in the regional FPS competition and the best teams advance to state. Last year, we didn't qualify for state, but we were alternates for other teams at our school who did qualify for state. We complete, we competed in the novice competition and we won first place.
This year, we made goals. Our first goal was to qualify for state. Our second goal was to make it to internationals. And our unlimited goal, ultimate goal, was to win internationals. We made, we met our first two goals and our fourth grade team also qualified for internationals. Two of the four teams representing Minnesota at internationals are from Sheridan.
Going to internationals is very expensive, so we've been having fundraisers. We would like to invite you to our fundraiser, our first fundraiser at Bowling Night at Lariat Lanes on April 30th and our Divine East Dinner Night on May 5th. Do you have any questions for us?
Tell us what the competitions are like. What do you folks do?
So at the beginning of the competition. Well, first, we do a lot of research on a topic and then we go to the competition and then at the competition, we are given like future scenes and we have to identify 16 challenges, pick only one of them. Then we find 16 solutions. The big solution is called an underlying problem. And then we find 16 solutions.
You have a lot of help up there, don't you? I do too. It happens to me all the time.
And then we find like criteria for it to, and then we do like a matrix grid to figure out which one will be our best solution. And then we write an action plan for it and that's our solution.
Wow. That's a lot.
And after we write the action plan, we perform a skit in front of the judges.
Wow.
Any other question?
And you guys made it to nationals and internationals?
Yes, we did.
Whoa. Hey. Talk about some bright kids here in Richfield.
My name is Molly Ellis and I'm a parent at Sheridan Hills of a couple of kids. And I also want to acknowledge our coach, Sheila Johnston, who is really the unsung hero here. She's also ... Unfortunately for us, she's getting ready to retire. So she's going out on top and we're all very excited for this incredible accomplishment.
At least she got flowers.
So thank you for acknowledging us tonight. Thank you very much.
You so deserve it. Thank you for your hard work, students, and keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you. You want to come up and shake hands? Here, come on. Come on, high five. Come on, come on. Jordan.
Just come around.
Great job. Great job. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Isn't it so nice to hear about how great our school kids are? Wonderful. Yeah, problem solvers. We're going to need you in the future, I can tell you. Yes, we're definitely going to need you.
Maybe the next election.
Thank you so much. That was so great. There's another thing too that I wanted to bring up. I got this really wonderful letter in the mail and I was just going to read it out loud and then pass it to you, City Manager. Dear Mayor Gotal, I'm an artist who is retiring because of age and eye problem. I am in the process of donating my remaining paintings to public buildings, hospitals, et cetera. And this is to inform you that I would like to donate some to Richfield if there is room in your public buildings for them. Pictures of the paintings can be found on Google Eleanor Macintosh doing Down Fine Arts America, A-R-T-I-D. They are also on Facebook with different ones and some duplicates on each site. If there is someone in your office in each building who has time to check them out and make a list of many of them, I have, I would deliver them to you. There will be more paintings on the site, but since I did not use it for several years, some may not be available. I would especially like to give some of the Richfield Community Center since I have exhibited there many times. I've seen her work, it's quite incredible. It's quite beautiful. And I'm really honored that as she retires, she has decided to give some of her artwork to Richfield, so we can hold that here. So please, would you direct your staff to look? They will love a lot of this stuff. It's gorgeous. Absolutely beautiful. Then one, another thing that I wanted to bring up, as I've been getting several calls and perhaps city council members have too, about road construction. Guess what? It's that season again. So in the road construction area, I know that Mike Eastling is somewhat prepared to talk to us about Portland and 66th Street and maybe some of the timelines. Businesses are wondering if they're going to get closed on 66th Street. You know, folks are concerned about how the crosswalks will be because they're visually impaired, those kinds of things.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it's, the spring has sprung, the construction season has started, and so we're getting questions about what are we doing there. And by the way, at the end of the presentation, I've got, I can show some pictures of what's happening on 69th Street. If you haven't seen that lately, that's kind of interesting. So anyway, we're going to, we've completed the planning process over the last year for both Portland Avenue and 66th Street. We've completed Portland Avenue long enough ago that we're completing the construction plans and I'll bring you up to date on where we're at with those things. So specifically, I'm going to talk here, we see Portland Avenue and 66th Street. We use the guiding principles that were, that arrived at a final plan, if you recall that, that really talked about the livability of the street, not just, you know, carrying cars. Those are the guiding principles that guided the discussion. Okay, and here is the design for Portland Avenue that we, that we arrived at, that we went to final design with, those plans are completed. And here is a typical section of the street that we have in place that shows the, how the street is, section is done. You know what? I might have pulled up, I pulled up the wrong one. Hang on one second here, I'm sorry.
Well, while you're looking for that, I'm going to make one more announcement here. I wanted to also mention that the Minnesota Magicians are still in the playoffs. And I've been following them. If you go on Facebook and like them, you can see their scores and they actually have some tapes of some of the stuff that's been running. And I'm sponsoring one of the young gentlemen who's a Minnesota Magician and it's been a fabulous experience. Their next game is Friday, April 17th at 7:30. I'm going to be there in Richfield, so please, we want to have a big showing. Do you know that Fairbanks always packs the house, so we have to pack the house too? And if they win, they're going to continue on to the next game on Saturday at 8:00. And if they win again, they go to 7:00 PM. Now, the hometown advantage is what we're hoping for, so everybody needs to be there to cheer, cheer them on. Tickets are $10 for adults and $8 for kids. And I got to tell you, this is some really, really great hockey. They play fast and they play hard. These kids are really working hard because they, they want a ride to, a free ride to college out of this. And a lot of them are there for a couple of years playing here. A lot of them live here in Richfield Homes or Bloomington Homes or South Minneapolis and they participate. You'll see them out in the community, they have to do community service actually, and also hold down a job besides doing, playing hockey. So they're some of the finest young men I've seen in a long time and I hope you'll come to the games. You'll, you'll see a few of us there, I'm sure. Edwina's been to a game or two as well, so, and so have you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I knew you there, so that's great. Do you have this ...
I got the right one up now.
Okay.
So here we go again. So here we're talking about, oh, you're up on the big screen. Okay, we got both 66th Street and Portland Avenue that, Portland Avenue is going to be done this year. Here's the section that we're going to be doing. So Portland Avenue, the timeline. We're awaiting approvals from MNDOT and Federal Highways. The construction plans are done, but we, of course, with the funding, we have to wait for their final approval on that. We're expecting that any day. The timeline as of today, we hope to publish to advertise on May 7th, the bid opening on May 28th, which will allow the council to award the project on June 9th. The work to start then later, late June. The contractor will determine the exact schedule and I can talk a little bit about what that might look like. There will be full road closures. Because we're replacing the sewer and the water in, along this, we're going to be able to, we're going to close sections of Portland Avenue, three, in three, in three different sections. The specific work progression is going to be determined, determined by the contractor, negotiating with us, but his bid and how he does it, he gets a, he gets a say in how he's going to proceed. The project will be divided into three different sections. For example, one of the first section is like right in front of City Hall between the roundabout and 70th Street and then from 73rd to 70th, and then the last section from 73rd to 77th. The contractor can work on multiple sections at one time, but he must keep two of those three major intersections, that is, at 76, 73rd, and 70th, open at one time. So those are the contract restrictions that we have, but he's got some flexibility on how he wants to, to do that. And when we get that exact information, we'll provide that. But the important thing, I think, to note is that the road will be closed in, in sections in there, entirely closed for, you know, one-third or more at a time. There'll be weekly neighborhood construction meetings and that will be held on-site. The kickoff meeting will be scheduled once the contractor is on board to discuss the staging with the area residents and that's when we'll be having those neighborhood meetings. Now, on 66th Street, now Portland Avenue is a city project and, and so we're controlling that. The county is controlling the 66th Street and performing the, the design work. Right now, the county is in the process of acquiring the necessary right-of-way. They're preparing the final design. The construction is expected to start late in 2016 and proceed, you know, you know, perhaps into 2018. Something that I, we maybe alerted the council, but the general public may not know is that they, the Met Council has a major sewer main that, that serves not only Richfield but, but Edina that goes down 66th Street. And they're going to re-line that pipe. It's a very expensive operation and they're going to do it ahead of the 66th Street reconstruction itself. They'll be working in the middle of the street and have lane closures around the area that they're in. But they're going to line the pipe by coming into the manholes that are every, you know, three, 500 feet along, along the corridor and, and installing liners on the inside of the pipe that now is, is flowing 24 hours a day, full of sewage, and so they have to bypass it. It's a very elaborate operation and they have to make sure to get that done before that project starts. But that will be done in 2016. Private utilities, gas and electric do a lot of work ahead of the project also, and that work will be done in 2016. The closures and the road work will be starting in 2017. Now, how will the project proceed? Now, in the latest discussions with the county, what they're looking at is perhaps, I know, I think early on we were speculating that perhaps starting from the east and proceeding west. The county is saying that perhaps they could even start at both ends and allow work on both ends and that actually the traffic might be able to be rerouted and that would allow the project to proceed a little quicker. And so they're, they're taking a look at that. But one of the things that needs to be emphasized, again, once the contractor gets on board, he can see ways maybe to get the project done differently, maybe faster, and, and so we allow him, and the contract allows him some flexibility on, on the exact schedule. So that's the ...
So a couple of questions. I saw the word closure on 66th Street. Now, that's businesses, and I believe, Pat, you've heard from some, some concerns too, about businesses are concerned about their roads being closed in front of them.
Right. I'd mentioned to Mike that some county officials were out here a couple of weeks ago, meeting with some of the commercial owners on the, on the west side. And we talked about that and they indicated that something similar to Portland Avenue, that they'll try to have the weekly in, whatever section they're in, working particularly with the commercial, the commercial people, trying to give them some, some advance notice so they can do some business planning around when they're going to have bad access, no access, or, or how that's going to work. So I think that, that what we're trying to set up, and I think that I talked with Maury from the county and he's going to, I think that he's, he's starting on the west side, most of the commercial businesses from the west of Penn going up to Zerxes and everything, talking to them, trying to get them as much information as possible, then at the same time letting them know going forward that he's going to keep them advised so they can try to do, it's not, maybe it's, you know, I anticipated it being done in 216, but it's 217 now, but this gives them a little bit of a head start to do some, some planning around when they're going to have some real difficult times and try to set up their, their business model so they can accommodate, you know, some, some bad access or anything. So I think, I think at least as it sounds right now, everybody's cooperating. I mean, we're going to have some people gnashing teeth, it always happens, but at least the more information we can give them, the better they, able they are to plan. So I just want to keep that in, I want to keep that in play.
Yeah, the most, Councilmember Elliott, the most troublesome part of the scheduling is probably caused by our own city utilities and, and replacing those sewer and water services. It causes more closure than if we were just doing the road itself. So we're working closely with them and to get that done.
Because I know that the county commissioner had said that they would do everything they could and that they were hopeful that they wouldn't close the roads ever totally in front of businesses, but that may not be the case. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right now, they're in the middle of that design and they're having some difficulty with trying to, to do that. And we're going to certainly, as soon as we can get the information about how that might work and, and the, yeah, we'll, we'll ...
And on the roundabouts, so I had a call from a constituent asking about people with, who are visually impaired, and I know we're, we're looking at some different structures around the roundabouts. Can you just describe those of how that's going to work better for people who might have disabilities?
Okay, sure. The, there's going to be two things different about the, the roundabouts that we're going to be putting in at both Nicollet and Lindale. First of all, the location of the crosswalk is going to be located further away from the corner. And the other thing is, is that there's going to be a device that when you want to cross the street, you push the button and that causes a, a flashing light to appear to alert the drivers that someone is, is crossing in that area. These are two things that are relatively new to the transportation industry, I guess, and, and there, there's been a lot of success and you're, you're finding more and more of these flashing devices, you know, coming up there along American Boulevard in Bloomington, and we've got our own on Richfield Boulevard, Richfield Parkway down by the park. So those are going to be in place for the cross.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, please.
Not related to 66th Street, but I was asked, do you know how long the ...
Not related to 66th Street, but I was asked, do you know how long the Bloomington Bridge is going to be closed across the freeway?
Oh, you know, I don't, but I can get that information for you, I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, because some residents are saying that the ones that transition our city like to use it, and they're wondering how long it was.
No, that's actually entirely in the city of Minneapolis, and they're in control of that schedule, and I'm sorry, I just don't know off the top of my head.
No, I know I sprung it on you, but I thought I'd ask.
But I can find that out.
Okay.
So I'm passing this down, and please pass this on down to the city manager, this is an article out of the Star Tribune regarding fiber and internet, and what other cities are doing, but he's probably ruse the day he gave me the ability to text him, because every time I hear another city's putting, laying fiber, I send him a text message, "Did you know that Burnsville has 27 miles?", you know, so, you know, being that we want to be in the competition with the great cities around us too, and we know what our businesses really want and need, I'm really hopeful that as we open up these streets, we throw conduit down, and I know that some other council members up here also go with that. We might not be able to put the fiber down, because it's expensive, but if we put the conduit in, we can make that happen.
Mayor, members of the council, we're, the staff is learning a lot in hurry on this, we're going to hopefully bring some information to you soon about, you know, what some of the options are for that, because with these projects opening up, it's an opportunity for us to get in the game.
I just, yeah, I just don't want to miss an opportunity, possibly, do whatever we can do, what's feasible. Thank you. Then, I just, go ahead, please.
Oh, I do have one more thing, I promised you some pictures about 69th Street, I found them.
Please, oh, you did, oh, okay, okay.
So, well, the first picture that I'm showing you here is now, we're standing on 69th Street, looking at, in the background is the wall for 35W, and you can see the hole in the ground, and there's four pipes, you can see that the back hole there has opened that up, and that's the four pipes that, just beyond the wall, that's that those four pipes are leading into, the water drops down into a 4x8 culvert that goes underneath 35W, and when 35W was reconstructed, that 4x8 box was placed. So what we're going to do is, we're taking out that wall with those four pipes and connecting to that lower 4x8 culvert that we're going to extend all the way up 69th Street. And the other, maybe I got one more picture, this is, I turned around and then just looked down 69th Street, and if you haven't been over there, they've taken the road up, and you can see, there's a box, that 4x8 box that's going to eventually be replacing those four pipes that are in place, they're kind of lined up, ready to be placed, so, that project is rocking and rolling already.
We get good weather, now we do. And I just, I, city manager, when you get a time to call over to our utility companies, you know, some of the people over on the west side here, we had our utility meters put outside again, outside our homes, and they did not finish the front yard work, and I know that grass is coming up, and weeds will start growing and that, and they need to come back out, and re-srape those, and rake them, and put soil and grass down on there before the weeds start to come up. And I know I'm not the only one with a house like that, because I drove around the neighborhood to see that, so, if we could just remind them to get out sooner rather than later with an early spring, so that'd be helpful. So, actually, that's my list.
You don't have any more, are you sure?
I know, and she's like, Edwina, we're like, Edwina has stole the show, she didn't get to today, but maybe she did, she's got her list, all right, all right, Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, I've got between seven and eight. First, you know, Karen did tell us about Woodlake Nature Center, and their annual dinner fundraiser, it also comes with a silent auction, which is just a lot of fun, and to have Ellen Topsonhofer be there and talk about bees, she is from Oregon, and bee is the timely topic to talk about, and it is going to be very, very interesting. You know, oftentimes, when Fall has these dinners, you know, we have someone from, that talks about nature, or the environment, or whatever, and they're not dull topics, you know, they're very well-presented, it's very entertaining, you learn a lot, and it's just plain fun. So if you want to have a good meal, if you want to really learn about bees from someone who knows about bees, please join us, because, you know, tickets are on sale, and this will take place on the 24th, which is a Friday, and we have to know by the 21st if you can make it or not. It's a great deal, please join us. Okay, the other thing is, we've got, the Academy of Holy Angels will be having their spring open house, and that's on the 16th at 6:00 PM, so if you want to go and get to know your high school, Holy Angels, we often think of our Ridgefield High School, but Holy Angels is our high school too, and kind of tour it and participate in the festivities, that would be great. Then we have Frasier Walk for Autism, that will take place on the 18th, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and this is going to take place at the Mall of America. So please join, if you don't join, for the walk, at least join to cheer the walkers. One of our service clubs, the American Legion Auxiliary, will be having their omelet breakfast on the 19th, and following their breakfast are having their bake sale. So, you know, we've got to really, I think the service clubs do so much for the kids in Ridgefield, and really, whenever we have any kind of celebration, they always pitch in to help, so we really should also help them out too. The other service club, the VFW 45s, are having their tropical spring break party on the 21st, so, and they know how to party, so. And if you want to, if you really want to enjoy, you know, just a lot of fun, you know, they're just, you'd be surprised at folks there, everybody thinks, well, it's, you know, it's mostly seniors, but it's not, there's a lot of family, families that participate, and they have a great deal of fun. And then next, we have, we have something that's called, "Where in the heck is downtown Ridgefield?", and if you want to know that, you can go to the Minnesota, to the Ridgefield Historical Society, they're having a program on the 25th of April, that's another, you know, they're having, they're having all kinds of exhibits, but that's another place that you can learn and be surprised as to where Ridgefield was, where it came from, and how we're doing, and how much we've grown. I wanted to mention too, that in today's Star and Tribune, there was a nice article about Susan Freeman, who is the executive director, outgoing executive director of Veep. Veep started in a church locally here in Ridgefield, and it was, it was an idea to help those that needed to be fed, and needed, you know, social services. And it started at a church, and from there, it just took off. And Susan has been very instrumental, and this is, this, from a church to the largest food shelf in the state of Minnesota. They do all kinds of things, they do transportation, they do loans for a part, for rentals, or what have you. They are an organization that the majority of the donations that they get do not go into their own administrative services, but go into actually helping folks directly. The organization too is staffed by good, good professional folks, but they really rely on volunteers. And without the volunteers, Veep wouldn't work, but Veep developed very early on the concept that, you know, we all are a village, we all work and live together, we all help each other. And if you have an opportunity, give Susan Freeman a call, thank her for her service, we're really blessed to have her and the organization helping Ridgefield. And I believe that's it for the moment.
Councilmember Elliott.
Then you turn over here, and I'm supposed to follow. The only thing I want to say is, we had a lightning round before we came into the council meeting tonight with developers and proposals for the Cedar Point Housing Area Proposals, and I've got to say that we had six outstanding teams with, conceptually, a lot of, a lot of really good ideas, and a lot of proposals that we're going to nurture and work on, and probably meet them again, and try to figure out, and it's going to be difficult to try to figure out if we can select one out of six that can go forward, that we can work with, but I just want to tell you, it's exciting to see how many, how many different developmental teams that are recognized all over the metropolitan areas, being really good in here this evening, offering projects on what they can do over for the Cedar Point Housing, and also that a couple of them we're talking about, all the way down Cedar to 77th, where eventually we're going to have the underpass, and it's going to be an exciting development period in Ridgefield over the next five or six years, so, that's going to be really fun.
Councilmember Howard.
I just have one item, the Ridgefield Human Rights Commission wanted me to pass along that they're accepting nominations for the Jean and Mary Jacobson Award, which is an award that could honor a person, a family, an organization, that's doing great work in the community in Ridgefield, and those applications are, you have until April 30th, and you can just visit the city website, just right in the, kind of the bottom of the front page of the website, at cityofrichfield.org, if you have thoughts on people you want to recommend for the Jean and Mary Jacobson Award.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I actually want to thank our staff, John Starks and his, for that presentation we had tonight, and kudos to our mayor. I think the tunnel project that's moving forward now has really lit the candle for development in Ridgefield, and I want to personally recognize you for that, because I know your tenacity has made it go through, so, thank you for that. And then also, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee would like to mention to everybody that today, this month, April, is Military Kid Appreciation Month, so think of the military kids this month in April. That's all I have, thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
I just wanted to say that, you know, everybody's always talked about the east side, well, boy, that east side is going to turn into one heck of a showplace.
It's going to be prestigious.
It's going to be very prestigious, it's just going to be gorgeous, it's, you know, we're all going to want to move to the east side. But, you know, we have two councilmembers that, well, we have three really, that represent the east side, and, you know, and when I first ran, I ran the east side, so next time I have to move to the west side to run there too, because I'm trying to achieve a personal record here.
What we have to do is disabuse the people, or the nation, or the readers of the notion that the east is east and west is west, and never the twain shall meet.
That's true, that's right, thank you.
We're going to erase that.
You're so eloquent. Anyway, we just, you know, we're very, very envious that, you know, that you will have neighbors that are that prominent, and are welcome to Ridgefield.
So many more things will happen because of what's been going on over there. And then, we have chamber guests here, from the Chamber of Commerce, and they're going to be doing an introduction, please, right over here.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity here for a few moments, to introduce to you the new chamber president. It all happened rather quickly in the last week, Angie Saifauer, who had been our chamber president for the last four years, has resigned. Very quickly, our executive committee did a great job of a search, and we've, Angie was just walking out the door, and she was walking in, so it's a...
Introduce yourself.
It's a great way to have that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Deborah Hampton, and I'm representing the Ridgefield Chamber Board of Directors. I wanted to introduce you to Lori Nelson. Lori comes to us, she is an attorney, she also has a political background, she's had about 20 years of working with nonprofit organizations, most recently as the executive director for the Friends of the Minnesota Valley. And if she could just take a minute and kind of share with you why she came to the chamber, and kind of her vision for us.
Thanks. Thank you. I'm very, very excited to be the new chamber president for Ridgefield. As Deborah mentioned, I've been working in the community for the last 12 years as executive director for Friends of the Minnesota Valley, so I've got a history with the community, and I'm finding that I've got lots of friends here already, in my first week. I'm really looking forward to building on what Angie has done in the past. I would like to increase the membership of the chamber, and I'd like to promote the community, and work with you leaders within the city to try to enhance the economic development initiative. So I'm very much looking forward to meeting each one of you, and I'll probably be trying to set up a meeting. You know, you'll be getting a phone call or an email from me, just to hear a little bit more from you about what your visions are for the city, and I want to be a part of that as well, so I'm very excited to be here, and thank you for welcoming me.
Thanks. I'd also like to add that I'd like to publicly thank Angie, and recognize the time that she's spent, almost four years now, with the chamber. If you pay attention to things like websites and social media, that's probably been the one of the largest contributions she's made and brought us into this century, in promoting not just the chamber, but also Ridgefield, so I'd like to thank her for the work she's done.
Welcome, welcome to Ridgefield, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, at this time, I'd ask the council to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The pos, motion carries. City manager, we have the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items that be necessary. Tonight, there's about seven items on the consent calendar, starting off with item A, consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's zoning code to conditionally permit school-based health centers as accessory uses within current operating schools. Item B is consideration of the approval of a resolution modifying a healthcare savings plan for the International Union of Operating Engineers, local 49 bargaining unit employees. Item C is consideration of the approval of a resolution reappointing Pat Brecken to the Ridgefield Tourism Promotion Board to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2017, or until its successor has been chosen, whichever is later. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution providing for the sale of $2,690,000 in general obligation street reconstruction bonds, Series 2015, for the Portland Avenue reconstruction project. Item E is consideration of the approval of a resolution providing for the sale of $1,660,000 of general obligation street reconstruction bonds, Series 2015, for the 69th Street Reconstruction Project. Item F is consideration of the approval of a resolution providing for the sale of $5,085,000 of general obligation street reconstruction bonds, Series 2015, for the mill and overlay projects. And finally, consideration of the approval of resolutions for reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of reconstruction bonds to be issued by the city for the following projects, reconstruction of 69th Street from Knox to Humboldt Avenue, reconstruction of Portland Avenue from 67th to 77th, and the six-year mill and overlay project. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The pos, motion carries. The next item is a public hearing for the consideration of a resolution giving host approval for the city of Landfall Village to issue conduit bonds for the benefit of the Progress Valley, Inc., in order to finance an expansion and renovation of their facility located on 308 78th Street East. So Progress Valley, Inc. is a Minnesota nonprofit that operates a men's chemical treatment facility located at 308 78th Street East. Progress Valley has asked the city of Landfall Village to issue tax-exempt, backed, qualified conduit bonds on its behalf to finance the expansion and renovation of its facility. The bonds to be issued will be in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000. Tax-exempt obligations are usually not eligible for purchase by banks and other financial institutions, but Section 265B3 of the Tax Code permits each issuer of tax-exempt obligations to designate up to 10 million of tax-exempt bonds as bank-qualified bonds, that are eligible for purchase by banks and other financial institutions. In order to issue bank-qualified bonds, an issuer of the bond must not exceed to issue more than 10 million of bonds, other than private activity bonds that are not qualified for 501(c)(3) bonds in a calendar year. Generally, bank-qualified bonds provide a better interest rate than non-bank-qualified bonds. The city of Ridgefield is unable to issue the conduit bonds for Progress Valley because it plans to issue up to 10 million of its own bank-qualified tax-exempt general obligation bonds for city projects in 2015. Both Minnesota law and the Tax Code require the city to hold a public hearing, provide host approval anytime another city issues conduit bonds... hearing, provide host approval anytime another city issues conduit bonds for a facility located within the city. Staff recommends approval of the resolutions providing the host approval for the issuance of the revenue note and the city of Landfall Village for the benefit of Progress Valley. Um, so this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to talk or speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone here from Progress Value, Valley? Would you like to say about your great project of expansion or anything? Say hello?
[laughing]
Uh, we, we all enjoy this. Just please introduce yourself, and then tell us about the project.
I'm Suzanne Lambert. I'm the executive director at Progress Valley, and I've been there about ten years. And I was before you folks, uh, last October.
Yep.
And that was great. Um, basically, we're very excited, uh, at Progress Valley. Again, we're a private, a private nonprofit organization, and we provide chemical dependency and mental health services for adults. And our goal and our plan right now is to, um, not increase our capacity at all, but our, our building is just too small as we continue to expand our services for the people that we serve. And so our goal is to put an addition on to our facility and renovate the entire facility, and have additional group space, group meeting space, individual meeting space, um, uh, larger bedrooms. And, uh, it, we're just excited we're gonna, that we're gonna be able to provide these, uh, just a, a, a nice home environment for the people, uh, that we serve. And so that's really what these monies will be utilized for, is to, um, renovate and to put on the addition.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on this? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The, the public hearing is closed. At this time, I would make, um, a motion to approve a resolution giving host approval to the issuance of a revenue note by the city of Landfall Village for the benefit of Progress Valley, Inc., in order to finance an expansion and renovation of their facility located at three oh eight Seventy-Eighth Street East.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's nice to see somebody renovating and updoing their facilities and keeping it nice. It's nice to, to hear that. Councilmember Howard.
So I have an item, a, a public hearing to consider a request for resolutions authorizing a comprehensive plan amendment, conditional use permit and variances to allow an auto body repair shop, Mako Collision Repair and Auto Painting, at sixty-two forty-four Cedar Avenue. Uh, for many years, the building at sixty-two forty-four Cedar Avenue was owned and operated by Quest, now Century Link. Use of the land by a public utility was consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of public quasi-public. In two thousand eleven, the property was sold to cleaning service Zero Res. At the time of purchase, the proposed use of this site primarily for parking service vehicles was found to be substantially similar to Quest's historical use, hence no land use approval, uh, no land used approvals were required. Over the past four years, Zero Res's, Zero Res's business has substantially expanded, and the site has become overcrowded. Uh, applicants Mark and Carrie Kaufman have entered into a purchase agreement with the owners of sixty-two forty-four Cedar Avenue. The Kaufmans are proposing to use the property for an auto body repair and painting facility, Mako. The proposed change in use requires that the applicant apply for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of the property from public quasi-public to community commercial, and a conditional use permit for auto body repair in the general business C two district. The applicant is also requesting two variances related to screening. Amending the city's comprehensive plan is a question of community character. There has been renewed interest in development within the Cedar Corridor over the past six months, and the council has discussed possibly revisiting the ten-year-old Cedar Corridor master plan. Uh, the Cedar Corridor master plan and the city's park master plan both identify this site as a potential area for park expansion. However, funds are not available at this time. Whether or not this property should be part of the new study of the Cedar Corridor, or whether this particular change is appropriate, is the key decision in this request. Uh, a little more. Auto body repair, uh, businesses are conditionally permitted within the general business district. The proposal requests a variance for a six-foot fence on the south side of the building in order to screen damaged vehicles, and reduced setback and landscape requirements around the northern parking lot. The planning commission voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of all requests.
This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak to this? Please, state your name.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Mark Kaufman. This is my wife, Carrie Anne, and we're the ones making the request. Um, a couple things I would like to comment on. First of all, we, uh, would love to be part of, of this community. Carrie and I live just on the north side. We're just past sixty-two, but this is our, this is our community. This is where we do our shopping. This is where we live, and we really enjoy Richfield. Uh, one thing, one key part of, of our reason to move down here is, we are a, a significant portion of the maintenance of a lot of the airline companies. We do work for Delta Airlines. We do a lot of work for all the rental car companies, which makes up a big, big part of our business. And this would really be helpful to be, be close to there. We're a small company. We're a small business. Uh, we're a family, family-owned business, and, uh, we're very proud of our employees, and we just really love to be a part of it.
Thank you, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak? entertain a motion?
Uh, a motion to close?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, closed? Just go to the recommendation. Okay. Oh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the planning commission, when Mr. Kaufman presented, and a couple things, a couple points he raised with the planning commission that were outstanding. He, you talked at length about the eco-friendly processes that you use, and, and it was really impressive, uh, the way you recycle and capture, and, and do a really wonderful job of making sure everything is, is, uh, green and, and eco-friendly. And secondly, it was you talking about, you know, the, the jobs that you can offer to, to residents in the community, and, and good-paying jobs and everything like that. All in all, I think planning commission was, was extremely impressed with, with what you're offering and what you're bringing to the city. And, and I feel the same, and I, I adventure to say, everybody in the city council feels the same. So welcome to the neighborhood.
I especially like the idea that they're screening against the cars and things like this. We can have problems with that, and it's really unsightly for some neighbors. So thank you for being cognizant and being a good neighbor.
So I've got, uh, two motions. Uh, do, do we do these individually, or as one?
You can do them either way, but, um, read, read which one you want.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think you should do it as two separate.
Do we?
Two, two separate acts.
So the first, uh, motion I have is to approve, uh, a resolution authorizing a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of sixty-two forty-four Cedar Avenue from public quasi-public to community commercial.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Your second.
Second motion is to approve a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit and variances to allow an auto body repair business at sixty-two forty-four Cedar Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you. Welcome to Richfield. We will look forward to seeing you. Councilmember Fitz Henry, you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the item I have on my agenda, uh, on my, is a consideration of the first reading of an ordinance for rezoning fourteen hundred, fourteen twenty, and fifteen hundred Seventy-Eighth Street East, and seventy-seven eleven Fourteenth Avenue from mixed-use community M U C to planned mixed-use. And I see Mr. Starks is up there, so are you willing to give us a briefing on what we're talking about?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, what we have tonight, uh, and, and councilmember Fitz Henry went through the addresses, uh, but it's a, uh, it's a comprehensive plan amendment that would allow Audi to go in the sites, uh, that have been discussed. Uh, it's a, it's an amendment from mixed-use community to, uh, planned mixed-use. Um, part of the staff's rationale on this, uh, is that really with the possibility of further development along the four ninety-four corridor, it really, in the past, maybe mixed-use community made sense. Uh, now it's more, becoming more of a regional draw, and so that this kind of a comprehensive plan designation would be appropriate. Tonight is a first reading. We normally put first readings on the consent agenda, but we just wanted to make sure we gave you this opportunity to ask any questions, uh, that we could make sure we and the, um, the developers, architects here, that we could address for the public hearing.
Good to join.
I guess I can continue. Uh, in the summary, it actually explains what is going in this allocation, and it will be a International Autos Group, uh, be located there, and, uh, they're the Audi dealer. And so it'd be looking at a, uh, very nice building from what we've seen going in this facility. Uh, so I'll go ahead and make a motion, that we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning fourteen hundred, fourteen twenty, and fifteen hundred Seventy-Eighth Street East, and seventy-seven eleven Fourteenth Avenue from mixed-use community to planned mixed-use.
I'll second. Um, and I just wanna ask staff then, as we look at this whole corridor, and it's something I think that, uh, actually councilmember Garcia brought up, um, we're doing some changes rather than changing everything all piecemeal. Maybe we should stop and have a bit of a study and figure out what we want down there, as we do have the underpass coming through. And, and nothing with Audi, I don't wanna necessarily stop that. These are great living wage jobs, and they look like they have a really nice building that fits on the site, so I don't wanna stop this progress. But I think we ought to be looking at, at a, a larger picture. Um, because we're having some pretty great developers who already came to the Cedar Point Two, but some of them who are talking about the corridor and then turning the corner around four ninety-four across. And I just wanna make sure that we're really mindful and that we can do the best use we can.
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, a couple of things. One is, all the developers that we're talking about, the Cedar Point Two area, um, there were several that have talked about grander, uh, development, uh, along the east side. And all of them, we've, uh, talked to them about the Audi proposal. I believe several of them have reached out to Audi, um, and, uh, to date, they've all said that that would integrate very well into what they're thinking for the area, uh, that it wouldn't be anything mutually exclusive with what they're putting forth. Um, the other portion of this, um, you know, it's a little timely because of the property owner's, uh, the status of his leases on the property. And the fear is that if something can't happen while all the leases are simultaneously coming to an end, uh, then, uh, there'd be the, the possibility that, um, staggered leases start being signed again, and perhaps we miss this opportunity for a long time. I'm not trying to, um, you know, put the, uh, you know, like in the car industry, I'm not trying to put the hard sell on anybody.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking, actually. And I'm, and I'm concerned about that. What I wanna do is look at the rest of the corridor, and that's what councilmember Garcia said. And we're piecemeal-ing changing comprehensive plan for this development or that. Maybe we need to be looking at that in a bigger, larger area together, um, before even we do our comp plan.
Yep.
Um, and, and look at this, and decide what we really want, because like you said, community maybe is not where we wanna be. It's just community.
Right, absolutely. And staff, that's something the staff thinks we should be doing as well going forth. We do have a, a plan for the east side. It was done in two thousand and four. Um, the way I've described that is, the plan is stale, uh, and it's probably time to take a fresh look at the east side as a whole.
Yeah, and I wanted to go on down the four ninety-four stretch on Seventy-Seventh.
Right, right, because with the tunnel, um,
Yeah.
the, um, Cedar Avenue and, uh, Seventy-Seventh Street really become more connected than they have in the past.
Oh, most certainly.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, councilmember Garcia alluded to this last time we had a conversation, and I think we should move that forward, and I think the council would like to be involved.
Yeah, and, you know, this is a little off-topic, but staff is, um, is supportive of that, um, doing some planning for the east side and the Seventy-Seventh Street corridor, or Seventy-Seventh Street, yeah. Um, also, it might be time to take a look at, uh, Sixty-Sixth and Nicolet as an area plan, uh, maybe even before the comprehensive plan begins. So that's something we've been talking about as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded, and just, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we have the city managers' report.
Um, Madam Mayor, I really don't have anything specific to report. I would say that, um, the one thing on the, in terms of the legislature, the, uh, the TIF bill extension for the east side, um, I, I think that's moving along. It's, um, it's passed committees in both the senate and the house, and I think it, uh, I'm hoping it's gonna be included in the omnibus tax bill, or, uh, and, uh, or at least be passed in some fashion at the end of the session. I don't, I don't hear anything that would make me think it wouldn't.
But we've got somebody, we've got a watchdog down there.
Yeah.
I'll keep my eye open.
Good, okay, sounds exciting.
Well, and I, I think ours is not the only community that's requesting this, so.
Right, that's right.
So chances increase if others.
Well, you know, that's a, really a nonpartisan type of a thing. They're both, both sides like this too, so hopefully, you know, all these communities get these kinds of extensions.
Yeah.
Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further, um, motion, uh, items, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good meeting.